Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the November fourteenth meeting of the Finance Committee to order a kind of a vote. If you would please call the roll.
Counselor King.
Present.
Counselor Lawrence.
Present.
Counselor Sin.
Present.
Counselor Harris.
Present.
Counselor Hughes.
Present.
Counselor Lamore.
Present.
We indeed have a forum here this evening. Just for the record, the following is the open meeting law, which reads as pursuant to the open meeting law, any person may make an audio or video recording of this public meeting, but may transmit the meeting through any medium. Attendees are therefore advised that such recordings or transmissions are being made, whether perceived or unperceived by those present, and are deemed acknowledged and permissible. Before the committee here this evening is Councilor Order two zero one six dash one twenty-two F, which is two million dollar appropriation going towards the investment in technology, well, schools and the upgrade into the phone system. And before I recognize the Superintendent, who I believe will tick off the presentation here this evening, I just wanted to connect in with the council because there was some questions leading up to this evening. And the information has been disseminated, and I believe that roughly a week or so to digest. But what we're speaking about here is sort of our compartmentalized, you know, this appropriation this evening. You have received an updated capital improvement plan given to us by the administration, which, as we had spoke about prior committee meetings, was a five-year rolling plan, and they've associated a dollar figure of up to one hundred and twenty-five million dollars over five years. When I got that information, I started to work with, you know, Mr. Walker and told him that we wanted to engage and have a dialogue with the financial advisor to really talk through what these projections mean, not only to our debt capacity, but I think also, you know, the anticipated net new growth that we're hoping to see through the city to help pay for these expenditures. So, as the chairman, much more than I would encourage you to reach out with any questions. Follow-up meeting with the financial advisor for first selfless is forthcoming, and, you know, as I mentioned, if I have information, I will share information. So, without further ado, Superintendent Schools, Dr. Christopher Farah.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you. And good evening to everyone. As you know, always, in whatever business you're in, city business, there's opportunities and there are challenges. And we, because of our school committee, because of our mayor co, because of this city council, we have an incredible amount of opportunity for our students as well as our staff. Challenges, technology is always a significant challenge, as you know, and so this opportunity, this consideration for the school system is something that we really appreciate very, very much, collaborations in this regard. So, I brought with me, first of all, Deputy Superintendent Mollie, but also Keith Sagala and Matty Roy. Keith Sagala, the head of technology. Matty Roy is Senior Director of Curriculum. And if they could just take a small bit of your time, just to make sure that you really have the full scope of what this means to, you know, almost nine thousand children in the Quincy High schools and over three hundred and fifty of our incredible staff members. So, if we could, if possible, okay?
Welcome, Mr. Sagala. Welcome this evening.
Thank you, Superintendent. Good evening, superintendents. In collaboration with the superintendent's leadership team, program directors, principals, and our digital learning teams, the QPS technology plan and training team consistently monitors our district's level of readiness, supports students and educators, and evaluates existing technologies. We continue to provide a comprehensive technology plan, which will better serve our students, educators, and parents. As a district, we seek to equip our students with the knowledge and skills necessary to compete in the twenty-first century, and we strive to provide our staff with state-of-the-art equipment, technical support and training, and the main focus of enhancing their classroom teaching and learning. Tonight, we're proposing a fourth tier approach, including new computers for academic classroom teachers, new technology labs, new mobile labs, and new classroom interactive whiteboards and shortbread projectors. Our proposal includes two hundred and fifty-six new Dell computers for academic classroom teachers. The breakdown is as follows: one hundred and thirty-nine new computers for elementary schools, approximately eight to fifteen computers in each of our elementary schools based on staffing and need; thirty-six new computers for middle schools, approximately eight to twelve new computers based again on staffing and need excluding Central Middle School, if you know, it was a brand-new school, three-years-old, with wonderful state of the art there, so it would be the four; middle schools, Atlantic, Broad Meadows, Plain Wester, and Sterling Middle; and eighty-one new computers for high schools, approximately thirty-eight computers for both Quincy High and North Quincy High, and five new computers for our goals program; seven new technology labs, that's a hundred and seventy-eight new Dell computers throughout the district; four elementary schools, including Lincoln Hancock, Hocker, Snug Haller, and Swan Elementary School; two middle schools, the Atlantic Middle and Plain Wester; and one new lab at North Quincy High School. Our proposal includes four mobile carts equipped with twenty-five Dell computers, that's a hundred devices. Mobile carts will be housed at Clinton Marshall and Lincoln Hancock Elementary, Atlantic Middle School, and North Quincy High School. And once again, these will be housed at these sites, but throughout the year, our schools will have the opportunity to use these devices based on special projects and online assessments. And finally, again, consistent with our QPS technology plan, we're proposing to equip eighty-four classrooms throughout the school system with interactive whiteboards and shortbread projectors, including fifty-five at our elementary schools, that's five each at our elementary schools, twenty at our middle schools, that's five each at our middle schools, and nine at North Quincy High School. At this time, Matty Roy will briefly share how this technology is integrated into the classroom on a daily basis by our teachers and our students.
How are you doing? There are so many wonderful ways we have to engage our students and teachers with technology, so I'd just like to highlight a few of those direct connections to the technology we currently have and that we hope to continue to build upon. In our academic classroom teachers, we currently have them matched with a desktop computer or laptop. This allows for their daily access to aspect tools such as online attendance, the grading, lesson planning, and the teacher classroom pages. Teachers have immediate access to self-created lesson plans, webpages, blogs, student forums, wikis, video clips, and Google Docs, numerous resources that they have at their fingertips. Individual classroom or teacher devices also promotes communication with colleagues, team members, building administrators, parents, teachers, and the superintendent's leadership team at Coddington. Teachers can also access their classroom or individual device for after-school professional development, which could be delivered through webinars, training videos, or online courses. Having a classroom desktop or laptop connects the teacher to additional equipment like the interactive whiteboard and projectors. These tools allow for a tremendous amount of student engagement, real-time connections to current events, satellite images around the globe, or scientific research, as well as virtual field trips to some of our greatest museums, national monuments, underwater exploration, or direct link to the International Space Station. All classroom teachers, specialists, and academic program teachers can reserve a computer lab for a multitude of learning experiences like science research, online assessments, essay writing, math skills practice, audio clips of historical speeches, while continuing to practice digital literacy skills such as keyboarding, developing PowerPoints, creating graphs and charts for data analysis, using animation or graphic design for storytelling, movie making. I mean, the potential is just limitless. The mobile carts is just the last feature that I'd like to highlight, and this to me really is very exciting. The mobile devices that come into our classrooms via a cart, or perhaps there are a few individual four, five, or six devices a teacher may have been granted through the mini-grants, allows for, it really is starting to take the place of our pre-teacherial in our textbooks. So, it makes for that interactive learning, that real-time learning that we're so excited to give our students the opportunity for. Okay, thank you. And now I'd like to introduce Dominic Ventorelli from the City IT. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Lieutenant Ventorelli.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Councilors. I'm sure some of you don't know me. My name is Dominic Ventorelli. I've worked as a network administrator for the city of Quincy. I've been here thirty-three years. I'm sure some of you are saying in this moment that helping you work in thirty-three years, and it doesn't look a day or less fortunate.
That's a gift. That's a gift. Put a lot of golf in.
The list before you have consisted of some of the buildings who have connections to City Hall based on some lease lines and some with no connections at all. The fire stations in the senior center have connection back to City Hall with some lease lines. Installing the fiber to these sites eliminates ongoing costs of leasing these circuits. A city's school-wide fiber infrastructure not only will be ready for future needs, but will solve a lot of present needs. We have a growing cost, a growing need for cost-effective bandwidth. As the data storage and the applications move off of conventional authorized and into the clouds, government institutions will become increasingly bandwidth hungry. High-speed networks are critical to changing needs of local governments with a specific emphasis on law enforcement and public safety agencies. From data on traffic lights to video surveillance and email, the volume of information flowing through the city every day is soaring, and that means the need for capacity to handle that data at fast speeds is going up, is growing too. A fiber infrastructure is needed to extend to all city buildings and school buildings for our VoIP telephone system. A VoIP system basically is a computer-based telephone system, which we will basically own and run over five lines back to City Hall. We currently have it running at City Hall, this building, not this building, but the Coddington, the City Hall here, the Coddington Building, Quincy High School, and Central Middle School, and it is being proposed to Sterling Middle School, the Sterling Middle School. We end up saving thousands. Extending to all city buildings will eventually eliminate monthly costs that we are now paying, and basically on a three-year hour-wide, we potentially save fifteen thousand dollars per month. But we can't do it without actually running this fiber, all these fibers through these buildings. Right? Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Ventorelli. Before I recognize Counselor Forrest, I actually just want to, like, the financial fees, I don't know if that will be used at Caddanon, or this one may be the finance manager, I also want to mention is going against the album with Assistant Superintendent Mr. Mollie, so, Paulson Young, Mr. Caddanon, Forrest, this evening.
Great, counsel, thank you.
Just a quick question, a little thought, you know, a quick question, me myself, and I'm sure you all get it back on around well, certainly a, you know, a strong proponent of giving the children in the city of Quincy the tools that they need to succeed, no question, particularly in that ever-changing, constantly-evolving ecological environment. My question was around the financing. This is just something that I was sort of noodling on the other day over the way home. If we're making this investment today into this technology, which you'd probably agree with me when I say, you know, technology is, you know, valiant and then quickly depreciates, you know, so it's always changing. What was the thought process? It's probably an easy answer in terms of, you know, we have a bond issuance before us. Why wouldn't this be something that we look to, like, beat back over time, that we're constantly turning over the equipment and bringing in the new and disposing the old versus purchasing it, having hard assets sitting across from them?
Your question was about leasing?
Leasing versus purchasing.
Well, the useful life on computers usually, the minimum amount we go is five years. For modeling purposes, on all the financing, capital improvement plans, we start out with a twenty-year plan just to cover the global ask, to cover everything. Within that, there are specific asset classes that you can finance over a short period of time. So, if we were just looking at, say, computers themselves, we might want to go with just five years and finance over five years. If it were the fiber that we're talking about, twenty-year life. Some of the larger service, probably ten years, if that's part of the purchase. So, it really depends on the asset, and we can tailor it at the time, the issuance, while prior to the issuance and plan with the investment bankers on what makes the most sense for the city. And I agree with you, there can be a fairly vast turnover of some of the technology, so you don't want to be paying for it too long for that very reason.
So, essentially, you shorten the duration of the debt that you put in the market. Basically, every one of these proposals that come before us are compartmentalized based on useful life, so when you go and issue it, go into the marketplace, okay, this is something looking at with just five versus, you know, road and jolas, like, a twenty-year issuance, for example.
Exactly correct, counsel. Exactly correct. Okay. Counselor Forrest.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mark. If you have a question more, I'm going to be probably for, I guess, Dominic, who's representing IT, and I truly appreciate every time that I've been able to go with IT, you've been a, you know, the man behind the curtain, you definitely get a lot done for the city of Quincy, so I do really appreciate that. Maybe it's your, not, I'm not trying to be off there, it keeps the gears on the, on the line. So, one of the things that I've consistently said is that the city doesn't spend enough money in its technology department, is something that sometimes they felt couldn't functionate in a decade-old's technology. So, I'm really pleased to see this come forward. I find the schools, however, have always been able to keep up to date, and we obviously will be supporting, supporting the best of technology for our students. One thing that, as we've talked about, our development in downtown was about, you know, lack of fiber network and lack of infrastructure in our community to bring this high speed that, to attract some of the businesses we want to go after. I think it's fantastic that we are taking this time to not only go for the schools, to public safety facilities. I just wanted to recognize, within here, I would say, with the backup information that was provided to us, we're leaving about fifty-three thousand dollars that is a cost savings to this application because of the Houston Maritime Center project. As part of that, not bringing our fiber down to that building, I know you're involved in this as well, we were able to connect African House School, we were able to connect Engine Six in Houston, as well as the Houston Community Center. So, those are all three of our public buildings, and we've been able to, you know, quietly bring, able to bring online to our fiber network because of other projects. So, we'll say, I have a lot of appreciation for the administration of being able to leverage funds when, you know, you worked on one project to benefit another, so I really do appreciate the IT, whether it's from, you know, coming in on the public safety side, you know, it's part of the schools, part of their other public buildings. One thing I've always been curious about, particularly when the students are going home, like, who has access to Wi-Fi and internet, and a lot of them have, have the tablets and computers and laptops or mobile platforms these days, do we have, is our Wi-Fi that we're able to offer in our schools accessible onto the school grounds? So, for example, after school, mom wants to sit at the playground, you know, doing some work, where the kids are able to sit kind of on the school grounds and utilize the Wi-Fi out on after-school hours, is that public Wi-Fi, do we have that available?
There's an actual, in every school, and we call it the guest network, which should be used for that, that if there's, I believe, Central Middle School might have put a couple of APs outside. We're currently doing a little Australian school, we're sitting down to glance at that job. So, eventually, there is a company going through every school right now, doing a whole assessment of all of our Wi-Fi in all the schools.
You know, just a good as an opportunity, like, if Mark was to stay home, like, from Robert Hens, but was able to utilize his facilities and how we can optimize that, so this is a question. The other thing, more so on the city side, how to reference the need for cloud data storage, I know Chuck is here, this would be a question for him, so if you're able to check right, if you need desktop line, well, that was a project that this council had invested in, was anticipating that project completion, is that, where does that stand, that moving the city data storage to the cloud?
I'm not really sure, staying at this point, it's still being discussed.
Okay. And then, the other one was, he talks about, or the funding provides seven hundred thousand for upgrades, software upgrades, and study design and engineering and technology upgrades throughout the IT department. Is that something for your department, we talked about that study, is that something specific, or is that IT going on assessing throughout the departments of the city what their IT needs are?
I believe this is for the operating of the phone systems, which is, right?
Sorry. Mr. Chairman, I've got three, some major representatives.
For you, Mr. Chairman, Delmac is, the boot's on the ground, he's the door. Chuck is unfortunately not available tonight. This gets into a bit of a broader policy discussion between the department, obviously the mayor's office, in terms of what our next steps are going to be, and the mayor, based on some of the conversations you've had down here, counsel, and you've had directed with Chuck Phelan, and there is an interest in going further than what's on the table right now. We don't know, it doesn't look like specifically that we're going to get much beyond the seven hundred thousand. That seven hundred thousand is going to go much further than the work that is explicitly open in the courts. We do have to get it going through the budget itself to do some of this work, planning, some judgments, some design, and some thought process that can go into what the next steps are, some of those things you mentioned. But at this point, you know, there might be some wiggle room within that seven hundred thousand for some initial capital investment, but it does not, at this point, look like that that's going to be the case.
Okay, I was just, thank you, I was, I appreciate the conversation. Going through the different financial packages, we have one, public schools, five thirty-two, the city with fiber buildup and phones, we have fiber plans, which are more on public safety, public safety and library buildings, as well as city phones, and then C C seven. I was just trying to do the math, I thought this, under seven...
Yeah, the math is just about there.
Got it.
So, there's a couple clauses in that sentence about the potential for some additional work to be used, spent in that seven hundred thousand. We don't think, at this point, we're going to get there with that seven hundred thousand.
That's great, I just, you know, I think what the, more so on our side of the house, what the IT needs are, let me literate the, excuse me, I have three copies in my textbook, I have three roses in the mail for you, you know, some of these housekeeping internal processes we need to be paying up on, but we are looking forward to that discussion offline to be continued. Just wanted to see, was looking at the one point three and four I'm going to make. Okay, that's everything. I will be supporting this, I do appreciate you looking to the best for our students, it is time, and even as your own computers in the classroom, you know, are antiquated, it's time passes when we walk best with the technology, and we will carry across the entire school system, so I really appreciate it, check to make sure all of my schools will be able to walk up, and so thank you so much to the administration.
Thank you very much, Counselor. Forrest, the phone, please, Counselor King.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman. I want to thank the, Mr. Ventorelli, being here for the IT partner for Chuck Phelan, as well as yourself. I want to thank the team behind you, Superintendent Christopher Farah, Heather Mollie, Matty Roy, Mrs. Sagala, and Mr. Malane, thank you for coming here tonight and expressing your gratitude towards what we need to do to move this city forward, Quincy Public Schools, the Commonwealth of the United States. I just wanted a couple comments, and then I'm going to, I'm going to ask a few questions probably to the next group behind you, who probably can take some things. Just to start off, I know that the public, as well as some of my colleagues, would always try to understand that, you know, why aren't they taking, why isn't this allocation being taken through a budget? And let me just describe to you what had happened this past year. We had three point six million dollar allocation for the new budget of sixteen, seventeen, and out of that three point one six, we had a back-end one percent will be teachers' contract and a front-end two percent allocation, which was fifteen, sixteen for one percent, sixteen and seventeen for two percent. They came up to roughly two point five million dollars. Of that three point six million, of the two point five that went to the teacher's salary, you only had about six hundred and sixty thousand dollars left over. And basically, being on the school crew with this group in the prior two years, that gets eaten up pretty fast. We had gotten to a point in the Quincy Public Schools where we've actually, to the point where we had cut so much stuff in the past, over the last ten years, we've finally gotten to the point where we're, where we need big. With the kindergarten age, we've got those all up to par, we've got the special needs aids up to par, our foreign language department has upgraded. I know about the six hundred and sixty thousand dollars, there was improved Quincy technology as well, because you're always trying to keep that at the max, you can't be behind on that. As for the new schools that we've built, the Quincy High School two thousand and ten, the Central Middle School two thousand and thirteen, a lot of those new buildings, there's all new upgrades and better technologies in each of those classrooms, so you don't really have to do the upgrades at those facilities, and we'll be in that situation with Sterling Middle School. It's other facilities, the other schools, that we need to get up to par with, and having Mrs. Sagala come up and talk about the two hundred and fifty-six Dell computers, and how many are going to be in the elementaries, one thirty-nine, the middle schools, thirty-six, and the high schools, eighty-one, having those extra Dell computers in these other schools is actually balancing everything off. Is that correct?
Absolutely, one hundred percent. We work hard.
And we work hard to try to get the balance out there, as well as, you know, just keeping up with the budget. And I know the public may say, well, that should have came out of the budget, or that, some of my colleagues may say, that probably should have came out of the budget. Now, just for saying, telling you upfront, that the budget gets eaten up very, very fast. Once that money is allocated towards the schools, you don't have much of a wish list, I guess you could call it, there's not much left over. It's almost like this past budget, that three point one six, a good portion of it was basically a fixed cost, that you had to pay your teachers in that particular salary. So, I'm just coming from an aspect of one point three million dollars. Can you talk a little bit more about, will this be used for the new testing, the MCAS or the POCs? Will this, will these new computers be used for that?
Absolutely. So, yes, of course, first of all, the mobile, the mobile carts, those four mobile carts, hundred devices, those will change though, just when, when in the spring, when I go to administer that PAC assessment. We'll also prepare our students in advance, the technology labs, the mobile carts, in advance, will prepare our students, whether it's keyboarding skills, online strategies, how to drop and drag, those, those questions that are on the PAC, I know, are going to test two point zero assessment. We're able to do this through, three years ago, the system invested in an inventory system, it's called PDQ inventory, we're able to identify our technology, the make, the model, how it is, at this point, to work, through our technology plan, to replace new technologies and upgrade labs and teacher classroom computers and such.
With this out paper, who are we going to move forward tonight? How fast of a turnover do you have to purchase these and hang in the classrooms? How, how long does that time take?
I prefer that question to Jim Malane.
Well, it's always a process, and it's a significant amount of money, so it has to go, for instance, contract, the Dell is on the state contract, so that speeds up the process. So, it would be probably a matter of a month or so to get them in, and then we'd have to find, they have our image on them, so we're basically able, excuse me, to plug right in into the classroom, now it's a matter of getting our text to get them into the position, which we'll take to see if they're not back. It's like, you know, if you can do it over the occasion, it obviously helps us out.
So, basically, the other kids end this, before the spring test, which begins in April, so we can generate that, that money.
So, basically, the time is ticking, because you have to get them into the schools.
That's right.
We have, went to vacation, obviously, over the holidays, and then the kids come back to school, now you have to teach them before April. So, you basically have, well, three and a half months to get them up and running and get them educated on how to use them, and then have it apply for, is it the MCAS or the PAC, or is it both this year?
It's MCAS.
MCAS, okay. Is, so the PAC is, it was a pilot program, are they dumping that in as well, maybe you do both, or this year is just a straight MCAS?
MCAS with a technology twist.
Technology twist, okay. Well, you know, they basically answered most of my questions, Mr. Ventorelli asked for the IT section. We have to keep upgrades throughout the city of Quincy, we're talking about all this development that we're doing in the city and having to keep up with our infrastructure. It's the same category over here in the technology, and I feel that if we're going to be upgrading buildings and all these other things, we need to be upgrading our fiber and our technology sources throughout all this. So, if I see on here, you have seven hundred thousand dollars worth of allocation, of that seven hundred, some of it is going to go towards the schools as well, is that correct? For the phones? For the phones and the...
The $700,000, I believe, is just on the city side. The phones on the other, the phones and then the fiber will also be on the other, will be developed with the school system.
Yeah, so a combination of that, okay, all right. If, if I could at this time, I'd like to make a motion or a strong recommendation to move on allocating this $2 million, which is 1.3 for Quincy Public Schools, and 700,000 for the IT. I could make that in a formal motion.
You can make that a formal motion, a formal, just, you know, some of your other colleagues, Councilor James waiting in the queue. So...
Thanks, Chairman. Just had a quick question, through you to the next representative, Mr. Walker. Tonight, will we also take care of these non-examined capital expenses for the fall season?
No, he, who is Mr. Chairman? That summary sheet, that summary sheet includes the transportation request from the school department, that was taken care of within the equipment request in the spring, so that's already defined.
Okay, all right, awesome, thank you. That's it, I mean, I'm happy to support education, the school system. They go along with the state, last week there was a vote of confidence for our public schools, and we want to continue to invest those dollars wisely. So thank you very much to everyone who's represented, the school department, as well as finance, IT, have to make these improvements, whether that's certain technology. Thank you, Councilor, Councilor Yang, and Councilor Hughes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This question I believe probably for Mr. Powell. I have a question about the warranty, yeah, okay. I said that, two questions for you. The first is for the products themselves, you talked about the light stand, the computers being five years, the fiber about 20, and then the larger server's about 10-year length. This is a great, great time, I think, of pricing and the lead time for when we're going to receive the products, but is something in there about any warranty on any of these products? Do we have an idea of a warranty that's, are we part of the package, are we buying warranty kind of these products?
No, I would have to defer that to Chuck Failing, as far as the particular equipment that comes along with the product, I'm not familiar with that, just familiar with the price tag.
Okay, if, if the warranty's not built into the price of the year, are we looking at buying warranties for these products, or not?
Purchasing additional warranties? Again, I defer to IT on that. I get familiar with the final number and where we go with that financing.
Okay, and then the other question I had is, for the quote that's in here, it says that the price does not include police details, does not include permitting, and does not include new underground instruction, and I know, Councilor, did you want to mention that our infrastructure is very old, and I know as much as we can go out there through the studies, I actually sat in a DPDW meeting one time, and one of them mentioned that there wasn't no electrical line on the map, so when they went and did water work, they actually didn't have electrical line, so I understand that our maps are very old. With that, we do anticipate that there's going to be probably a emphasis on certain number of work that we're going to do. Do you guys have an estimate for those numbers, because that's not listed on the yield?
Mr. Walker, through you. Mr. Chairman, if I might, counsel all that will be factored into the basic day-to-day operation of the city through the Department of Public Works, through a number of projects that go on in the city for a day-to-day basis. This capital plan is basically for the capital itself, there may be some additional costs associated with, on any given day, what work needs to be done, if you need to hire a police detail, if you need something. That is built into the city's operations on a day-to-day basis, and how you coordinate with other infrastructure work that may be going on, the IT department. Obviously, if there's any digging underground, we'll be coordinating directly with the DPW with the Water and Sewer Department, with the utilities to determine if we're going to do Project X in June, and we also know that there's a new gas line going, and we would want to coordinate that. And that's something that we do, the city does, on a regular basis when these projects come up, so you try to time everything to make sure you're not digging four times.
I can tell with what you guys did at the Housing Factory, that's what you guys do for this, okay, great, thank you.
We try to authorize enough to cover it all, but I don't know if it takes it this week away.
As long as you guys are considering it, and those things, that you can anticipate, that's why I'm concerned, so, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor, Chair, I recognize the President Hughes.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor for all. I just wanted to thank the, the school department and the administration for bringing this forward, and I'm happy to support it, and also in hearing some of the stuff regarding smart boards, I'm just very happy that I'm no longer in school, because smart board from the law, I don't know. But I am happy to support this, and I'll be voting in, in, but I want to thank and recognize the great work of Dr. Cristofaro and Kevin Mulley and everyone else involved in the school department, Mrs. Sedala, Mr. Mulley, Alan Malane, and just thank you for doing the best, thank you.
Thank you, Councilor. Okay, there's a motion on the floor made by Councilor DeBona to move it passage, all those in favor?
Hi.
I have the votes, and Ms. Ice will revisit this in the regular city council meeting with a positive recommendation, but as part of the finance committee hearing, close.
Great. Go team. Hey, you know.